All right, we're gonna call meeting in order. Stand new pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning, up. All right, minutes and reports received and filed.
I have the December 2017 contract release file.
Okay, Commissioner Committee leads on reports. Let's see, we got Susan Young's retirement today. There's a bunch of ribbon cuttings this week, I'll let you all look them up at Chamber. Lincoln University has ballgames Thursday night at home and Saturday, I believe. Leadership Friday morning, Chamber Gala Friday night. Firefighters dance in Wartsville Saturday night. That's about it until next Tuesday.
I got a RPC meeting tomorrow in Ashland and then I got a meeting with Sheriff Wheeler talking about pre-trial on Thursday.
He's sick, too.
Is he?
Yeah.
That's not good. I may not be doing that.
That's where Sam's at, in case everybody was wondering.
Yeah, Wheeler's house, yeah. Hanging out together.
Never know. They're both sick, so there's something to be said there. All right.
And there's a juvenile advisory board meeting on Monday. I don't know if you got a copy of that.
Yeah, I think that's one they usually throw on our desk, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that was the upcoming meetings and events. Commission comments? I don't have any, believe it or not. Bids and contracts, sole source approvals, 2018 SS01, CCL, CHVAC Automation CNC Group.
This is just one of those that we do every year for Across the Street. Any questions Greg should be able to answer, just for the automation of the HVAC Across the Street.
Just at the law enforcement center?
Yeah.
What do we bid? What do we need?
Software upgrades this year.
Okay. All right. I move that we approve the sole source. HVAC automation for the law enforcement center with CNC Group.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. 2018 SS02 Programming and Printing Ballots Atkins.
So it's those Atkins machines we bought a few years ago for the clerk's office and they're the only ones that can do the programming and the ballot printing, so this is just another annual one we do every year.
That's another sole source?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with it, too.
I move that we approve the programming and printing of ballots as sole source with Atkins.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 2018 SS03 IO Needles Arrow International.
Basically what it says there, a specific special kind of needle that EMS utilizes. Arrow International is the only manufacturer and provider of those. So this is just another sole source we ran uncontested that we do annually.
Okay.
Okay.
I move that we approve the IO needles as sole source with Arrow International.
Second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any aye, any opposed? Signing of the salt dome repair agreement, bid 2017-043.
You guys awarded to Meg Alley Construction last week. This is just the contract to get the salt dome restoration done at Public Works.
I move that we sign the contract for the structural repair and re-roofing of the salt storage dome with Meg Alley Construction.
Second, do we do roll call on contracts?
Yeah.
Okay. Lynn, will you do roll call, please?
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes. All right, new business, county payable review.
There are a couple of county payable out that I've asked for approval of.
I move that we approve a county payable penny review.
I think she moved it already. I talked to her about that this morning, so as long as it's not on there, then I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Mike Sap to present abatement hearing, 2017-11-001. Joseph F. Mydell and Tamara Noiner, 2934 Landing Creek Road, Jefferson City, Missouri, 65101. Solid waste, rad harbages, stagnant water, and vehicle nuisance. It's yours, Mike.
This is a property we've dealt with at least two times before in the past. Last time was May of 2017. This is a property at the corner of Doty's Little Acres and Landing Creek Road. This is an aerial image from March of last year from Google Earth of the conditions that were there for the May case. Went back out after the May case last year. Property owner, Mr. Mydell, said he had made considerable progress and had promised to continue making progress. We've reinspected the property late November and he was still in violation and the property had gotten worse. We've received, Mr. Mydell received notification through certified mail at the end of November, 11/29. And supervisor Joe Gassner received a call from him and the owner feels he's being singled out. He's complaining about other properties out there in the area but refuses to give specific addresses. We've driven the area, nothing out there is as bad as what his property is. So in 12-4, we reinspected the property violations, were still present. So general report to last Friday, property was reinspected by Mr. Gassner, environmental health supervisor. Violations still exist. The property is worse than it was when last heard in May of 2017, when the case was closed, when the owner had made significant progress and at that time said he would continue to make progress. These pictures show the lack of progress, in fact, the backslide since May of last year.
Somebody living there?
He says he does not, he only spends some times there, but he's out there about every other time we go out.
There's somebody out there a lot.
What are we gonna do with those RVs and stuff?
If they're licensed, nothing. If they're unlicensed, have the sheriff's department tell them and then it's up to the owner to return them from, if you issued the abatement order for the unlicensed vehicles. So these photos show the conditions as of Friday. It's vehicle parts, appliances, a little bit of everything, just garbage.
How big is the lot?
.38, according to GIS.
So county health department's recommendation is an abatement order be issued for the solid waste violations, the rad harbages, which removing the solid waste will take care of that. Stagnant offensive water, again, the solid waste item, tires, coolers, buckets, things of that nature that hold water, and then coordinate the removal of unlicensed vehicles with the Cobb County Sheriff's Office.
Well, he was up here a while back. I don't know if you remember when he came in there?
I did, I remember.
And it all happened because his wife, or ex-wife, let it happen while he had legal issues and so we gave him more time to keep working on it and it went the wrong way.
Yeah.
It looks worse, it probably did.
Oh, it definitely looks worse. He had half of the lot cleared.
Yeah. I don't know where else he lives.
I'm just wondering, you know, obviously there's that much trash outside the house. What's inside the trailer and inside those sheds and everything else? I'm sure they're full of trash, too.
I have not seen inside either one of those.
And then my other thought is, is that how much are we gonna spend to abate it? And is the property even worth that? We've got a trailer and everything else on it. Not that I don't want to abate it, I mean, get it cleaned up, but we're gonna have more money in it than we'll ever get out of it. Is there sewer there or is there a septic there?
There is sewer, this is the property that...
That's another issue. Were you here whenever we did that one?
Yeah, uh-huh. I didn't realize it was the same one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a consent, it's got a holding tank that's only valid for while he lives there, or while he owns the property.
It's supposed to be pumped on a regular schedule. They had staff to check to see if he still has a contract with the pump or if it's actually being pumped.
I mean, I'm okay with abating it. I just, I think it's gonna go right back to where it was, as long as he owns it. What are we gonna do then? Well, he brings more trash in.
Basically, we start over again.
Yeah, so we abate it again. And then when he can't pay the taxes and we sell it on the courthouse steps, we gotta wait how long? Three years?
Yeah.
So you can basically operate a little, you know, I probably shouldn't even, I ought to quit talking. Right, we did that once before, too. Didn't we do that out in Rosito or something that we?
Well, you own.
Yeah.
Those, because of those properties that you can use.
Right.
I have one out by Russell Mountain, sitting, taking water. Probably ten years.
Do we maintain it, or?
I don't know.
Guess I'd like some information on that. Right.
But we could get rid of, we don't have to get enough to satisfy the tax income. We could... There's somebody who will buy it, but the county would have to abate the lease. We may wanna look at doing that, cause then he at least gets that lot back on the tax books, gets it out of our administration, I guess, and that'd be the same thing we're gonna end up doing here. Who paid for the sewage when they put that in, Mike? Did we abate the property, did he actually just get it put in?
He got it put in.
Okay. I didn't remember that was on there, too. Yeah, that, what's that lot probably worth? Five thousand, maybe?
Maybe. It's .38 acres, it's probably not even eligible to have an onsite system on it, right?
So it's too close for a field, it'd be too close to a well.
You could put a shop on it, maybe. Was it grandfathered since there's something on it already, or? Maybe.
Till it fails, it's deemed in compliance and by the time it fails, it has to be brought up to standards, which you can't meet setbacks.
Right. So it's failing, basically.
What's Doty's Little Acres on down there? Are those all private, do you know?
As far as I know, they're all private.
Cause those are all private, bigger lots and stuff?
They are larger lots and it looks like they've sold to individuals, although I think most of them are owned by the same individual or families.
I'm for abating it, I mean, gotta get it cleaned up.
Second, is that motion?
I was just kinda talking.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
What's the address and stuff, Mike? You got the abatement order there?
Yes. And if you can just check which violations and...
All?
I don't wanna make assumptions.
So does he have stagnant and offensive water retention, too?
He's got tires and the buckets and things like that, whenever he's got water, he's got that violation on there.
I move that we approve and sign the abatement order for solid waste storage, rad harbages, stagnant and offensive water retention, vehicle nuisance at 2934 Landing Creek Road, Jefferson City, Missouri, 65101.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The record showed Larry voted yes for that, too. All right, EMS recruiting discussion. Hey, Mike, we give that, too. You got to get one, please.
So, we are looking at engaging the services of EMS recruiters, since we've had several unsuccessful attempts at paramedic recruitment. We have two open positions that have been vacant for a few months now. We've attempted pretty much our standard operations, trying to find paramedics out there, getting the, getting the word out, trying to well advertise it. The individual that we are looking at services with, I've met him personally down in Texas, that's all he does is EMS recruitment. He does it so well that he's started his own business and doing it on the side as well. The cost for his services are actually pretty decent in that line of work. Excuse me. And the, looking at a cost analysis, it would actually be cheaper to contract with him and pay five paramedic overtime shifts, what we're paying now for those. We're looking at, not necessarily just doing this now, we're wanting to keep trying what we're trying to see if that brings anything, but if we're unsuccessful with our further attempts, at least have the latitude to be able to contract with him.
So what's the cost, five overtime shifts, and what's the terms?
So, his cost is $500 a month, minimum of four months of $2,000. And we just took an average, you know, nineteen whatever dollars and time and a half times however much for the cost of it.
And so, he's just gonna try to spread the word for us, or he's gonna contact individuals?
He's got a lot of avenues that he works, reaching out to paramedic schools, past graduates. He just has a way of finding those folks that, unbeknownst to me, he does a pretty good job of it.
So, and there's no fee once he finds the person, and he's just paid up front?
Correct, yeah. The shortage of paramedics is pretty broad in this area. There are some, the major schools that I know of that really produce a lot, I've advertised with, there's others around the state that he has a lot of, he has quite a few contacts in just the state of Missouri itself, but...
So, this obviously wasn't in the budget, so where are we gonna pay for it from?
We were looking at a professional services.
Okay. Have additional funds there, or?
It would just, we would, that would just be an additional cost to it, but like I said, we're hoping to not have to use it, like, we're not wanting to just do this today, we're just wanting the latitude to be able to engage in this.
You say we're down to paramedics and we've been down to for several months?
Since the new schedule, which is, that just went in, but we've been trying to hire for them for those shifts for a couple of months. So ever since the new schedule came out, we've had two holes.
So it was basically because of the 12-hour shifts?
12-hour shifts, there was a couple people left because they couldn't do the 12-hour shifts, they had to, you know, for schooling or some other reasons.
So we're filling them with part-time right now?
We're, everything we can, fill them with part-time. We're trying everything we can to, using overtime as a last resort.
Questions?
I don't know, I don't like it, just from the outside part. I mean, what are we doing that he's gonna do? Are we, what are we not doing? Why can't we get ahold of schools and online advertising stuff that he's gonna do? You said 500 a month is what he's gonna charge?
Right.
Or something, probably.
I've done that, I've put flyers out, I've gone to, even looking at EMS-related articles or publications to advertise with them, it's a cost and that's where a lot of EMS folks will search for jobs, you know, Gems Magazine or something of that sort. I'm not sure if he has an end to where he has, was able to put ads in there for us, but even if I wanted to go put an ad into that magazine, it would be $900, I think was kind of the average for the, there's three major ones that we advertise with. I've sent flyers and postings to the schools that I'm aware of. I think he might expand that a little bit to the region. He's got a pretty considerable track record.
I'm just curious what he does that or not.
Yeah, like I said, he, I met him down in Texas. I mean, he's a, he's a sharp fellow, but I mean, he does it so well for that organization that he's, you know, made a side gig out of it doing the same thing.
I'm trying to find which email he had, he was talking about, we were gonna keep looking and see if we could do it until such a date or something that we'd...
Yeah, that probably would've been Friday, maybe?
I've got the email that he talks about with the contract. So he's wanting to do this right away.
We're wanting to keep trying, probably I'd say for another week or two. But like I said, we've been doing the same thing, we've been recreating the flyers, doing fresh advertisements. I've got a couple hits, but they're... Having to relocate and I don't think that's gonna be a promising thing.
But that's what he's gonna have to find, is someone that's gonna relocate.
The right person to do it.
So 500 a month, for how many months are you wanting to try this?
It's a minimum of four. But even if we get our two positions, we still have four or five paramedic slots for part-time to be able to fill. That might help bring that as well.
I don't know, I'm not crazy about it.
So you're saying that we need four or five part-time and two full-time?
I'm not saying we need the part-time, I'm just saying that's what we have if...
It's what you'd like to have.
We have an influx of paramedic applicants.
Right.
We need the two full-times. This is, I feel that we've exhausted what we can do, it's probably best to let someone else who's, does this for a living, give it a shot, see if he gets any better results. I mean, I said, we've been trying this for a couple of months now.
I mean, I'm not real crazy about it either, I mean, I'm just concerned that, you know, even if we hire this guy and he does, you know, he does his best, but we don't get anybody to come, I mean, we're still short. And so, now we've gotta look internally on how we're doing things, because we gotta fill these shifts. I mean, whether that's, you know, putting supervisors back on trucks or whatever that may be, I mean, I'm just throwing that out, I'm not saying that we have to do that, but I mean, we either go down a vehicle, basically.
There's, there's a lot of, we're, trust me, we're same boat you are.
Right, so, I mean, that... I mean, all that plays into revenue and everything else, too, so... Think on it for a week, or?
I'd say keep trying for a couple of weeks and then we'll see where we're at. I mean, how many people are gonna relocate for that job? So are they gonna get somebody from out of state or out of town to move for it?
We've done it fast.
What, I mean, do they, does he typically use incentives to get people to relocate, or?
Not really incentives, I mean, there's nothing that he can't offer, he can't negotiate on behalf of the county. He pretty much gets them to talk to us, he gets them interested in us.
I see.
He's got a pretty long questionnaire that he goes out to advertise with.
I mean, I'm just thinking as, you know, just any employee wanting, like Jeff said, just willing to relocate, what's, why would I wanna uproot and move, you know? I mean, obviously he's gonna sell all your best qualities and promote you as being one of the best in the state and everything else, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's, usually has to do with money. So...
Now, the other piece, too, is I don't know what he typically does, if he typically works with, you know, a bonus or something, commission off of filling those holes, but the part that he projected for us is not that, it's just a strict, hey, helping you guys out type of...
Right.
I know it seems like a lot, but I think his normal packages are...
A lot higher.
More robust.
Can we, can we think about it for, say, a week or two, while you guys continue to try and then come back up here?
Yeah, like I said, we're not wanting to do this today.
Right.
We're wanting to keep trying and just bring you guys up to speed in what we're trying, what we're looking at.
Okay.
We were looking at just putting in for a couple of those magazines, but then we thought this, like, if we're gonna put money into that, you know, two of those magazines, $1,800, engaging him, and I could even talk with him and say, hey, what's your full plan?
Okay.
And see some things, and I'm sure he probably just wants to tell me all of his tactics, cause...
Right.
...it's a taste in business.
Okay.
Yeah, $2,000 isn't gonna carry us very far advertising. I don't know what, you said what, $1,800 or something?
This is for two magazines, and that's for a month. We're proud of it.
So we're doing all these other technological, social media things with LinkedIn and some of those, too? And we're not getting anything out of that?
Every, like, I'll change it up every once in a while, put a new flyer out, change the design, re-close something, blast it out to, you know, different avenues. You get a lot of hits on it, as far as, you know, the shares, the people getting tagged and things of that sort, you can really look at the, kind of analyze your views and such, but you're just not getting a lot of follow-up, if that makes sense. you're just not getting a lot of follow-up, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of times, it's internal stuff, is, you know, the people that we already have working for us are telling their buddies or relatives and stuff, so I don't have the answers for you. I'm just trying to figure out how we can get more creative doing this. And I'm not so sure. I mean, that'd be a good tool to have in there. I just got bad feeling about it. He's gonna come to us and tell us, well, I got somebody interested, but it's gonna cost you another two grand for me to let you talk to.
We talked about in budget, you know, even the educational piece with some sort of tuition assistance piece with EMT to paramedic, something of that sort. There's other services around that really attracts folks. I mean, you can get, there's a lot of EMTs in the area. There's just not a lot of paramedics. But being able to have something in place to where you can farm your own paramedic is pretty valuable, especially in this area. You know, we've got a couple that are in the class now, you know, they're months from even being eligible to test, but getting on something like that and keeping with it will help us in the future.
Who are we losing them to right now?
Well, let's see, we've lost mainly to school. There's a couple that have worked 24-hour shifts. They're able to work their shifts around their schooling, so they couldn't do that, so they had to go, you know, they had to drop the part-time, which they do help us every once in a while, but they can't be scheduled. Some other services around us, we've lost one to, you know, Miller County, Boone Hospital. We've actually made a trade because we lost one to Boone, got one for Boone. It's just going to find out where, what schedule works best for their lifestyle.
I'd just venture to say it's gonna take more than four months for him to get much out of it. I mean, if you're using some of the same avenues as he's using, then...
I don't, and I don't know all of his tactics, Jeff. I can't tell you what exactly he does.
Just gonna sit on it for?
Couple of weeks, yep. That'll work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin.
No problem.
Guess it wasn't a no, at least. It's just not a yes. All right, goose population control at county park. Is that yours, up the works?
Yeah.
We're going hush?
Animal control. Remember, give to the sheriff.
He's homesick. Perfect time to pick on him.
Yeah, Larry's not probably happy with me.
We've been asked to look at some methods to be able to control the amount of geese out at county park. We did some research with the Department of Conservation and talking to them. They said the only way that we can really keep them from, is to keep the limited amount of geese out there is to have controlled hunting. The issue, if they ever breed or raise a family out there, that's where it gets implanted in the geese, and then they come back year after year. To our knowledge, so far, we've not had issue at the park yet where they've actually raised little ones out there. But again, what they suggest doing is having a controlled hunt, just to keep them off the lake during the nesting season.
And we'd be trying to hunt, and then we, other options would use, like fireworks and stuff like that to deter them after that. So you got option one on here. What's option two? Or that's just an option that you're bringing?
Yeah, well, the fireworks would probably be the deterrent after that.
So if we close the park for a week and then have the hunting season, or whatever you want to call it, that's not gonna cost us anything, right?
No.
No.
So what reason would we not want to do that for? Is there, what's the disadvantage?
Well, probably the disadvantage would be the negative PR on it.
Because we're cleaning up the park?
I understand, but there's, there's people out there that don't like the idea of hunting.
That's why they're vegetarians.
Those are the same people that don't like hitting deer with their car either, so. If you're not opposed, I'll make a motion to do this, so.
No, I'll fine with it. With, I mean, the first part of it, the pyrotechnics, so that part I'd wanna keep.
Right.
We'll talk about that later.
Okay. All right, I move that we close the park for one week and allow two to three people to hunt, to control the goose population.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oops, I say aye too. Any opposed? Now, do you want to talk about the pyrotechnics part, or are you just wanting to do the?
Well, I think we do this first, and then we see how it goes. Once spring comes, and we can see where the goose population is at then, so.
Okay. So Conservation Department, are there anybody gonna be out there at the same time? I mean, are they gonna have anybody out there that's interested in, if we can clean them up, as far as I'm concerned? There's no value to them.
I think we got several people that we trust to be out there that are interested in doing it, so.
Are they gonna try to do that at Binder at all? Has the city ever talked about that at all?
Conservation didn't even do it at their property, so. But they're in the city too, so. But yeah, they're a problem everywhere.
All righty. Signing of prosecuting attorney's MOU. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
That was brought up in budget time. You guys wanted to maybe have a little bit more discussion about it before you approve it. If not, if you haven't had time, we can put it off to next week.
That was the one during budget time, or the one after?
After.
I'm sorry, it was after.
This was a prosecutor that he wants to hire and pay for out of his money.
Yep. He brought it up the day that the budget was being approved, but we didn't have any MOUs or anything, right?
I'm still not sure on that one, so I think I'd like to punt it for a couple of weeks or something.
All right.
Can we get Chris out of here before we go to Capital Projects?
Okay.
CoStar license?
CoStar license, yeah. You had to sit through all this just to get that signed?
It's all right.
For a lot of years, we've contracted with LoopNet for commercial sales information, rents, and asking prices for sales. CoStar, or LoopNet was bought out by CoStar. Just recently, they've transferred their sales information to the CoStar website instead of the LoopNet website. So basically, all we're doing is doing our contract with CoStar instead of LoopNet, because they've transferred all of the sales information to CoStar. But it's the same parent company.
Costs all the same, Chris, or increase, or?
I think there's a small increase. Do you?
Just $249 a month?
No, I know it's, we get a bill one time a year for LoopNet. And then with this one, it's a monthly, it's $249 a month. Yeah. I wanna say, I think it's like $50 more a month. I'm not sure. But the cost is $249 a month. Yeah. It'll be 249, figure 250 for...
About $1,000.
Twelve.
Not more than that. It's gonna be about $3,000, correct? $249 times 12, three...
But the information with LoopNet is no longer there. That one's not an option anymore.
Was that under, what was that in the budget under? Okay. Is that the whole budget for publications then, or more than?
There will be, we will be getting some money back because we've already paid up to a certain point for LoopNet, so we will get that back. I'm not sure what the amount is at this time, though.
Right.
Are they the only provider?
Just about. There are very few of them, very few. In fact, I talked to Tom about this. He's used this for probably 12 years, and he said they really have some good information. I asked him, are there other options out there? And he said, not really, not any that have the amount of information that this one does. Not only will it have listings, but it also tells you what else is out there that there is not valued for, that they don't have a value. It's for sale, but they don't have a value on it. Yeah.
But was that the annual price, $539?
The $1,375 was the annual price, right?
So both of them together? But again, it goes to August 30?
Yeah. So from whenever this is signed until August, we would get a refund from that. And Tom is the only one in the office that uses the information. He's my only commercial person, so he is the only individual that has that. So there would be not, no additional cost with somebody else using it. It would be just the one person.
I'm just listening right now. So it's twice as much as what the LoopNet was, is what we came up to?
Mm-hmm. The, one of those pages are the typewritten pages, the portion that Tom put in there explaining what it is, what it does for him, and why he needs it. With commercial properties, it's very hard to get listing information and to get sales information. Most people don't want that to be public. So it's places like this that we have to go to get this information.
So 1,400 of his $2,400 budget was in there for LoopNet. What was the other 1,000 in there for? So that'll still get Swift, or spent, 1,000 for Marshall and Swift. So we'll need...
Yes, yes, we have to have that.
So it's just, it's monthly, so at some point, it'll run out of money in that account.
Yeah. And we've still got the contingency that's got over a billion-dollar surplus, so if need be, it can be transferred from there.
Right. Right now?
I don't know, I guess this letter confuses me even more, because it says that LoopNet's still gonna be out there as a marketing site?
Yes, I'm not sure exactly what they mean by the marketing site, but there will be no sales information or rental or lease information on the LoopNet site. So it will become basically worthless to us.
Kind of a redirect or something?
Yeah. The CoStar bought out LoopNet, and now they're making some changes, putting all of the sales, lease, and rental information on the CoStar site, and then doing something out with the, doing something else with the LoopNet site. And of course, all those people that were on LoopNet, now they gotta go to CoStar to get that sales information.
Then you said there are others out there. Do you have any clue what they charge?
No. I don't even know the name of any other. I talked to Tom about it, and he said he was not aware of any off the top of his head. And we haven't done an exhaustive search on that, but the information that we've used in the past from LoopNet has been good information. We've been very successful with that, and it's very difficult to acquire that type of information.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I mean, do we have to do this today, or can we punt it till next week? And I wouldn't mind talking to a couple of appraisers here in town and see what they use.
We could probably put it off for a week. Would probably not much longer than that, because that's where Tom, Tom's not able to make the searches for the commercial comparables right now, because he doesn't have that information.
Okay. My biggest fear is the other ones out there would be more expensive, so. I mean, it seems like a reasonable price to be able to access that information, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, not a large increase from what we were paying before. And it would, I'm pretty sure it would save at least that much in attorney costs for appeals.
Well, it's good to have the same information that the other folks that we're gonna be fighting against in BOE are using, so. And it may eliminate some of that, so. Yeah, if you don't mind punting till next week, I mean, all right with that, Chris?
Yeah, I'm good.
I guess we just need to make sure we got the money and the budget for it.
And is there anything you want us to do on our end?
No, I was just gonna call and contact a couple of other people and see actually what they use.
Okay.
But, you know, $3,000 a year, that's, that's what it was, right? $250 a month?
Yeah. $249 a month.
$249, yeah.
Yeah, so $29.88 a year. So, yeah, just do a little digging into it, and then otherwise, I don't have a problem with it. We gotta have it.
Do you, we set a specific date today, or are you just gonna send something out?
Uh, we'll just put it back on next week's agenda.
Yeah, Tuesdays. Yeah, if that works for it.
Any other questions?
Nope.
No, thanks, Chris. Do you want this Debbie until, okay. See if we got any other options. Probably not. That's probably gonna be. Seems like it's a pretty fair price. All right, let's go back to the discussion of Capital Projects to bid for 2018.
Well, it's getting, we're almost to the end of January now, and we're just looking at some projects that we might want to go ahead and start bidding. The process takes a while to get bids back in. I don't know if you want to do this. I don't know if you wanna do this through Sam's, not here today too, or would you get an idea of one or two things that you wanna go ahead and bid for this year?
Do you have the list for us, or?
It's under the budget part. If we make a new one, other than what we have.
So, go to the F? Drive?
F drive under commission?
Under budget for eighteen.
And shoot that, sales tax, courthouse budget for five.
Down at the very bottom of it?
Yeah.
Sales tax budget for five years.
Maybe what Greg just sent you is part of what he's put together before on, you know, A-list, C-list, what's important.
Of course, the A's and B's change weekly depending on what happens. I know we had talked about prior to budget, doing tuck, tuck pointing in the Carnegie building and doing the roof. And we also had talked about doing landscaping out front of the courthouse, as well as getting rid of the fuel tank. And I'm working on that. We had also, there was some discussion about the lot we just purchased down on Adams, whether we were gonna just asphalt that, or what were our plans were for that, or just let it go.
So, I guess if there's something you guys wanna get moving on, like, let's say, would it be cheaper to go ahead and concentrate on the Carnegie building, you know, as far as the ceiling, the building and the roof? And maybe the lighting, that was off the list. Do it all at one time as a project? Maybe, maybe it'd be cheaper, maybe it would. We don't know that.
The numbers that I've got for the tuck pointing and roofing were some updated numbers I had gotten last year about this time. I believe they should be pretty close to accurate.
Where, where are we at on our balance? I mean, let's, let's look at our, what we got and what we're gonna get in and.
Well, that's kinda, we've got it in two different.
Or what's? But I mean, do you have the encumbered amount? Do you have everything encumbered in there that we've already?
The only thing currently encumbered is Brian's IT stuff that we proved already that aren't in yet.
Okay.
As far as I know, we don't really have any open projects except for.
So, we got?
It's, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand of that.
That's not in there?
Right. That, that we haven't spent yet. So, is that your current balance?
One point one?
One point four.
Oh.
Sorry. It's hard to read.
All right. So, some of this copper machine, juvenile, all that stuff's been. All this, everything's already been paid for out of that? Okay. What about this twenty thousand dollars in computers that I'm seeing? I'm looking at a different sheet here, but you said Brian had computer stuff for like ninety-three, and then another eleven for Worldwide Tech, and then fifty-two for CenturyLink, so.
Those are the ones that are currently encumbered. So, there's a hundred and fifty of that, one point four that's encumbered for Brian.
For this stuff? Okay.
But that doesn't include his computers?
The twenty thousand for computers?
Right.
Okay. And then at half of the nine-one-one equipment, where was that? Wasn't that coming out of emergency services sales tax?
Yeah. I think I did take that out.
Okay. So, that's one point four, and you take a hundred and fifty out of that, so we got one point, one million two fifty roughly. And then we're gonna bring in how much every month?
About seventy-five to ninety thousand, which, on the news, or, you know, if it's at the end of the quarter.
Okay.
So, one point two five.
Right. So, if we looked at spending, if we looked at spending about that.
Carry forward.
If we, if we spent one point two, we'd still have one point two left from what comes in this year.
And I think that's what we budgeted in capital, right?
Did we, did we budget a certain amount to spend?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what are things that need, that have to be done? Need have to be done, really, or urgency? I mean, obviously, we've got some stuff at the Health Department.
Right. Well, of course, we won't know that until we get in there, till August, June, September, October, whatever.
I do have that twenty thousand dollars that has to be spent by May thirty first.
Right. Did you ever get your signing prize?
No.
Right. I've got some other companies we'll call. If they don't wanna give us a prize, there's other people we can talk to. Yeah. Right now, with the, the snow and the heavy ice we got last week, we did find more shingles off the roof over there.
Carnegie?
Yeah. And more tuck pointing fell out where water got in and pushed it out. Right now, that's the biggest building in these. We get the outside done, and then we can work on the other smaller stuff as we go. Pringer is in great shape. Just a few items out there that could be, like in the kitchen, the oil table, it needs to be replaced, but it still works. Just can't get parts anymore. So, if it does quit, we'll have to replace it then, for sure. Carnegie's, like I said, needs the roof, tuck pointing, that building should be in good shape. We just put a water heater in this morning, so everything's back up and going. We're not gonna do anything with the current health building. Uh, then that just leaves landscaping, finish up outside the courthouse, and the landscaping will out there in Carnegie's after the tuck pointing and roofing gets done. I could talk to you this morning, Chris, on information from DNR, exactly what all the paperwork we have to fill out and petroleum institutes. We'll probably have to keep that payment for one more year, one more year, because it's nineteenth, it's coming up, so.
Just the majority of the stuff that we have listed here for the Health Department building and Carnegie building, if you wanna give an estimate, that's about eight hundred and eleven thousand. Remember again, those are only estimates we're going out to when things get big.
What about the elevators?
Elevators, uh, let's see.
Courthouse and Carnegie building?
Courthouse, if that elevator goes down, there's no more parts available for it at all. That's when we'll be forced to remodel it.
Total replacement there?
Uh, that's just to upgrade. I'd have to see how they word it. I think that's just to upgrade, upgrade the new soft car, new control package, new drive motors and stuff like that to go. I don't think it's a complete rip out and put a new one back in.
And you think that's two hundred and sixty thousand?
That's the rough price I had got.
Do we have a maintenance contract on that and?
Otis, right now? Yeah, we do.
So, what, what does he think about our elevator now? I mean, obviously, he's looking at it every quarter or whatever.
Right now, he's, it's, knock on wood, it's running fine. And that's not to say tomorrow, something could short out and take it down. Just like what happened at Carnegie's, you know, that valve was decided to quit, and he spent five thousand dollars to replace that valve there.
What I understood is when we built the new elevator in the courthouse, that the old one was not going, the shaft wasn't big enough, you couldn't put a functioning elevator in there. That's why we did the other one and used that one only for going for prison. But we knew at one point way back then that we maybe just back down to one. That was no option to fix that existing.
And then, okay, yeah, I was here. And then, you know, I know Jeff's, one of Jeff's deals is tear down the old jail, put up a new one. Uh, and that's good how, depending on how we do the landscaping, the fuel tank and all that, that's when and if we do it. Of course, we're gonna need to look at courthouse. You know, do we wanna do both of those projects at the same time to upgrade the HVAC and the electrical, the plumbing, the sewer? Just we're, question of which direction you guys wanna go.
I think first and foremost, we got the new building for the Health Department. We're out to address what we have to, excuse me, what we have to do before we even move them in.
Correct.
You wanna set aside a certain amount to do that, or to do what we can do there?
Yeah. Didn't Christie say something about the flooring?
Uh, the flooring is gonna need to be redone.
And that's not on?
It's on here.
It's on here. It's ninety-five thousand.
Ah, I was looking at Greg's. Okay. Hang on a second.
We gotta redo all the floor there?
Yeah. The carpet is wrinkling up. Uh, the tiles are coming up. It's showing its age. You know, do we do everything we need to do to the building before they move in, or, which is the easiest way to do it? Or do we, you know, trying to do remodel projects and working over top of clientele and staffing is not much fun. So, do we bite the bullet, just fix everything before they move in, and maybe move her off till January of twenty nineteen before she gets to move in and just get everything done? Don't hit me, please.
So, Kristen, you said we budgeted one point two to spend, is that right?
Yeah.
And then?
I think there's a little extra in the old sales.
Okay. I mean, here's kind of, I guess what I'm thinking is that, obviously, if we kind of just left two hundred thousand as a number to do some stuff at Health, whether we spend all that or not, the new Health building takes you down to a million. And then I'd like to, I'd like to see us do the, get rid of the tanks, the fuel tank and all that stuff out here, and definitely do the roof at Carnegie, or at least bid it. And we have a twenty-five thousand dollar generator set here at the courthouse. What's that?
That's if, uh, well, we also talked about moving Brian to.
Right.
Over there.
Yeah.
That's a rough, if we were replacing it.
Put a new generator here?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't wanna do that.
Yeah.
I wanna get rid of the fuel tank and the, and the fuel.
Okay.
And I'd like to get Brian moved over to this, or the IT moved over to the sheriff's office. Probably do that upgrade to GIS server. I don't know if he already had that in the budget or not.
I think we're waiting for the city to. That one we're sharing with.
Okay. So, they gotta come to us on that?
Yeah.
I would like to get the sidewalks done out here. And maybe we try to do that other stuff at Carnegie too. The ceiling and the lighting.
Just the lights that are for down in the pit. It's so dark down in there.
But that's just kind of, I was just kind of talking, so. At least it gives us something to bid. I know Jen's gonna be leaving here a couple of months.
She can work from home.
She could.
And then maybe we look at upgrading one of them elevators too.
Okay.
I don't know. What do you think? Jump around too much for you?
Oh, I was trying to follow you on here and see the prices. None of them, I was against, that you already said. I think there's advantage to moving Brian. It's just we don't have to do that, so we can, that's one that we can put as a B.
Yeah. But if we get rid of those tanks, it's got old fuel and stuff in there, then we don't have any backup power for, or do we have?
We don't have anything right now.
We have a little generator with a little tank or something down there.
There is, but the generator, the injection pump came apart.
Okay.
Uh, it's, 'cause it was originally designed to run on high sulfur fuel, and with them running low sulfur, it just tore everything up. Uh, I gotta bid for thirty-six hundred dollars to rebuild the injector pump and stuff, but the guy can guarantee the injectors weren't trashed out because of, and then he wanted another twenty-eight hundred for injectors. So, you know, just to the point, how much money do you wanna keep putting into that whole thing?
Is there a way to hook the large generator up?
Yeah.
Run Brian?
Yeah. There's a transfer, or there's a fuse disconnect that we can tie into off of his cables. But that only powers the lower half of the old jail.
Right. But in an emergency, in the time being?
Yes. Yeah. And it's, it doesn't power anything else in that building.
Uh, the roof replacement. We've talked about this for I don't know how long. Is that the same tiles, or is that some kind of?
That is.
Replacement tile?
That's going back with an S-one slate tile, that price. We had bid metal roofed, and I think it was higher.
That's pretty close. I mean, it might have been up a little bit more.
Yeah. And I have no problem. Either one would look good on that building.
Okay. That's what I was trying to recall. So, you, this price isn't a slate. It's not some kind of composite replacement or something?
No. We looked at the composite, and I don't think it looks as good as, and it was actually even more, I believe, if I'm right. That would be the roof and the.
Are you in a hurry?
No. Didn't know if I heard it yet, so. Hard to tell sometimes. Yeah.
Well, I was trying to keep up with Kristen. I mean, it's going down, because we have two point two to start.
We can, we can go down them one at a time if you want. I mean, I was jumping around a little bit. So, you, you don't wanna do the, the getting rid of the waste and the, and the tank out here? 'Cause I mean, that kind of goes with, with Brian and moving Brian.
Yeah. If we wanna talk about the tanks and Brian, I mean, you said getting rid of waste.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I already. My computer just shut off or blinked, though.
I may at least get some prices on some of that. I mean, that doesn't mean we have to do that.
Now, John's not here. Was he all good with where we were gonna go with them and stuff? I know we had talked about it.
I think John was.
Pretty sure.
Okay.
But I thought there was a waiting period of some other organization that's in that building right now that may be moving, and it won't be till late in eighteen.
Oh, there's a room there now that they can move it into, I think.
I think it was the fact that some of the wiring and stuff there from the server that they removed, and the Sheriff's Association's apparently using, whereas they have to rerun everything to the other room, so they were thinking it would save a lot of cost to use what was in place if they're gonna vacate it anyway.
Okay.
I think that was June or July they were out there.
Yeah. I think it's June or July.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, we're just looking at the whole year, so. What do you think about the Carnegie and the ceiling and the roof replacement, that's about three hundred and ten thousand for both?
Yeah, we haven't done anything over there in a while, we've been putting the roof for.
Yeah, the last, uh.
At least get.
At least twice.
At least twice.
At least get both of those bid. Maybe.
Those are two I'm at the top of my list.
It's your help.
And I was kind of starting with the big money chunks and working backwards from that. If we're going to keep the Carnegie, then absolutely. Back when we were talking about, you know, getting rid of the old jail, rebuilding that and having some more room and moving people, then that was something that we were wanting to wait on. But that's going to be several years down the road, so I think we need to address both of those.
While we're there, do you want to look at the lighting then?
What about the elevator?
Yeah.
I mean, if we're over there working on all that stuff, do we want to just, it's eighty-seven thousand for the, roughly. I mean, at least bid it and see where we're at, I mean, never know what some of that stuff's going to come in at.
What, I mean, why do we need to change it right now, if it's still, I mean, it's still working, you got a five thousand dollar bill.
It's still working, but the, the relays that you plug into are getting very obsolete. Everything is going to solid state, plug and play boards where the relay days are gone, and there's just not too many relays left out there for that.
I mean, if the elevator goes down over there, we do have stairs that people can use.
Correct.
But there's no handicap.
Correct.
So it makes it an ADA issue for people going to the assessor's office.
Or all the way upstairs.
Have you been on new elevators, they're not much more reliable than the old ones.
I get that.
So, I mean, that could happen no matter what.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to discount that, we need to do something with it eventually, but.
I get over there, I think it's a seventy-one or seventy, and that was put in.
Fifty years old?
Yeah.
Huh?
I wasn't.
You weren't here yet, are you sure?
You were thinking.
Elevator thing, I'll put it as like an A minus, we'll see where we're at.
Okay.
Okay.
At the end, um, the outside lighting for parking, I thought we had put a floodlight up there a long time ago, so what, what is eight thousand dollars, I can get you a floodlight.
Well, that's, I just threw a number there, just those two, we put.
Scaring me, eight thousand for a light.
Well, it's, it's several lights.
Get it shiny like a diamond.
Yeah, but I'm using.
Diamonds don't shine either, Greg, they actually reflect light, just.
Yeah.
Unknown information there.
But the only thing, uh, well, I'm okay with bidding the lighting, I just, I think if we're going to do a lighting project and we got other lighting projects, that we ought to try to bid them together.
Well, that's why the lighting project for the, with the flowers and all that stuff.
Right, I mean, if we can.
Tie it all together.
Yeah. Obviously, different projects, you know, lighting's part of probably the courthouse sidewalks and all that other stuff. Okay, what do you want to look at next, Jeff?
How soon are you needing to do the window replacements, I'm still at the Carnegie right now, I mean.
Windows right now look fine.
That's a hundred year old building or whatever age it is and.
Windows right now look fine.
Old library, um.
The only thing we might have to do is a little touch up on some paint.
So that one probably shouldn't be an A, should probably be like a C.
So fifteen or two seventy-five? You lost me, I'm looking at your sheet.
Right above the health department building, eighteen.
Window frames for painting or replacement?
Yeah, I just said I'd have to look at, looking at them.
So are we painting them or are we replacing them?
Right now, I just paint them.
So.
Like I said, that was.
So replacement would be two seventy-five?
That's the rough number I got, that's years ago.
We just saw what the bill was for the courthouse and the annex, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's not going to be a cheap one.
No.
With that building, I mean, surely we can get some kind of grant or something.
Just got to see what's out there, there's not been much out there for anything.
I don't know, we talked about seeing what's out there and we never do it.
Well, I'm not talking about really doing any of these, I'm just talking about letting Jennifer kind of bid some of these, but.
So we have a solid idea.
Mm-hmm, right, yeah, projects that we'd like to get done and just bid them and.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as it's not something that we're looking at ten years from now doing.
Right.
So, so windows are probably a C, because you can paint them.
Yeah.
Or maybe we could replace some of, you know, if some are really bad, maybe we could replace a couple or whatever. Or is it just a, just steel frame or?
Wooden frame.
But I mean, would we go back with a metal frame and?
Yeah.
Where are you at up there Debbie, are you going down the list?
No, you're losing.
I know, I'm, I was going down Greg's list, which list you want to deal with?
That's fine, I'm finding them, they're still on here.
So, what do you think about health?
Yep.
Health, I'm not, I don't like health, that means you got exercises.
So you just don't like being healthy, you didn't say you didn't like health.
I ate part of a banana this morning, my body's still adapting to that kind of healthy food and it. Coffee kind of eliminated it. Is two hundred going to get it?
I don't know, I mean.
I mean, we could punt a roof the way it sounds, I think we can bandage that for a little while.
I have been on it lately, to look, I know the letters I wrote from the company that looked at it, it's over three years ago, and he said three to five, so. Have to get either, is there builders or notch to come out and look at it and see what their recognition is?
Yeah.
Kind of thought we did some of that, but what did, uh, oh, I'm drawing a blank now, from across the street. Didn't he get up there and look at it?
Where's that?
Jim Wish.
Jim, thank you.
Yes.
Hope he's not listening, I forgot his name.
Yeah, like I said, that was three years ago when he wrote that report down.
I mean, I was just trying to come up with like a number and, I mean, I just threw out two hundred, but.
Yeah, and that's what I'm working backwards from, is just going with your number and seeing.
I was thinking some money for FFNE, some money for flooring. And, uh. I don't know, or the HVAC, I mean, you said something about we had to do something with mechanical.
Get rid of the thematic controls, there's some parts left for it, it's got to get updated.
And what, what is that, is that HVAC upgrades?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, you know, that's sixty. I mean, obviously Christie's got twenty to do some stuff, maybe for a sign or.
And then, the majority of that building is the old lighting, T-twelves.
I think that's something we could.
Yeah, I mean, we could do it in the house, yes, but, yeah, I'd like to get it and get it done before they move in.
Lighting, we can work around after they're moved in, so that one I put it as a C, it's not something that they're going to go blind or anything, um, the window repairs.
Is that all drop ceiling, where you pull one out and put another one in or not?
Lot of it is, some of it's fixed though.
I would prefer to do the flooring before they get moved in, if we're going to do it.
Right.
If we're going to live with that old flooring for ten years, then, okay, that, we'll punt that one, but I think if we're going to redo it, if it needs to be redone, um, I haven't been out there since it's been vacant, it probably is pretty rough.
It's not, I think that's one of the, the flooring, it's, it's pretty rough, yeah, in that one area where they take all the dental chairs out, it's probably going to have a bunch of holes from all their water and air and everything, so I think the flooring is quality.
Okay.
One of our, is our number one priority, and I would like to get that little area faded to the three bat scene, because that's something that we give a little class, and we could actually bring in some revenue, but I still haven't got a estimate, I thought it either. I mean, the water and everything's theirs, just taking out a two bat and putting in a three bat, taking out the autoclave and putting in a stone, so it should be.
Okay, so we can tag two hundred as a holder.
It may not, like you said, it may not get it, I mean, this electronic health record, I mean, is that something that you really need to?
It's being bid.
It's being bid now.
Is it, okay, so we already are bidding it?
I guess we could get up at twenty.
Right.
It, it could, if we can go towards the HR, if we're having a position or if we're building that.
Okay.
All right, which one would we go to, we talked, already talked about the tanks and Brian, so if we get that all figured out, hell, we've been talking about them tanks for a long time too, so we can get them out of here here. Okay, health, tanks and Brian, uh, we already talked about Carnegie, the roof and, uh, ceiling, I think get that outside part taken care of, there was noise, take a look at windows later on.
Right.
And that elevator, I think, ride it till she dies.
Okay.
Okay.
For now, anyway, can be something we can punt. Where are we at then on?
We got about three hundred.
Tanks and Brian, what do we have the cost on moving Brian over there, I saw the tanks was fifteen or something somewhere.
Well, we only really had seven thousand, so I don't, that's just.
That was just to move him though.
Yeah.
Then you had tank system and the hauling of the fuel.
So tanks and Brian are going to be looking at twenty-five total, maybe less more?
I guess that depends on what needs to be done in the sheriff's office.
When, when you want to do that?
I mean, the seven was just moving the central equipment from one location to the other, wasn't any preparation, preparation over there?
That's thirty-four thousand, based on those three estimates.
So where are we at on things that we've kind of said yes to? About half million maybe?
I got fifteen thousand on the tanks, so you, so for the tanks Greg, you also need plus twelve for, oh, now I see where you got it lined up, okay. So twelve, fifteen, what else Debbie did you say?
Well, if, you want to go to the health department, the FFNE.
Ah, still on the tank thing, you just said to move all that and Brian.
Yeah, Brian and those three was thirty-four thousand.
So nine for Brian and, or seven for Brian?
Yes.
And then seventeen, twenty-seven for Greg's, tanks, tanks and Brian, thirty-four.
And you think we're going to need some construction down over there probably?
I think it depends, yeah, depending on where it goes or what needs to be.
If the sheriff's association got moved out, there's that whole office there.
Right, and we did all, depends on how things out and what's in place, that they don't have to pull wires or.
And I guess GIS would go too, stay here, I don't know.
Makes sense for them to be together.
Yeah.
Is that room big enough for both of them?
Hmm, probably not. What they do, you have the shredder in that they could make an office out of, so.
I don't think that's where their office is going to have to be.
Where?
There's a room behind that seat that they use for shredding right now.
They shred it and then re-shred it.
Will it be big enough for both of them?
I think that room probably would hold them both.
Yeah.
But it would probably have to be.
Yeah, it's just a shell right now.
Right, it's just, that's.
No walls, no ceiling, no nothing, no HVAC, nothing in there.
All right, what was next?
Okay, the health department, FFNE is what I heard, um, the flooring, yes, and then the HVAC, yes.
I think we just put two hundred in there. I was, I think we worked with that.
So, my concern is the windows, the roof doesn't leak, I mean, I'd hate to put stuff inside, money inside, and we have leakage problems.
We just had to have, like I said, either weathercraft or notch, or, or weathercraft notch, or buried melders or something, I'm just looking through those, make my recommendation.
Is it leaking?
I don't know, they have not said it's leaking to me.
I thought there was some of those windows up front.
Some of the windows, well, back on the backside, they've got bordered up.
In that atrium, they have like, they've built a lab on the backside of it, so there was some rough windows, I'm pretty sure last time I was there that they were fit, I'll be there tomorrow for a board meeting, I will make sure to look at them as I want.
Yeah, I'm not really saying that we're not going to do anything else, I just said let's, let's put two hundred there as kind of a placeholder, you know, may not spend fifty on FFNE, may not be sixty on HVAC, I mean, who knows what it's going to be, it may not be ninety-five for the floor, hopefully not, that's a lot, so, but.
That's what I'm going to do.
Six dollars per foot.
Let's just put down in there, if we don't spend at all, we don't, I mean, it's not that we're telling you, here it is, go spend it, I mean, I think Christie's been very good about that before, so I'm fine with putting it there and.
But let's bid those and see what they come at, and then, then if we got some extra money there, we can spend it, but.
I just don't think a roof needs replaced, I think we can still bandage it for a while.
Or it may still be good for another five or six years.
If somebody tells me three to five on it, you, I can stretch some to ten. See my old vehicles I drive around, don't make it still waste.
So on the health then, we'll go ahead and bid out the flooring and then bid out the HVAC?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And you're already bidding the electronic health records?
That's right.
Right. Okay, but it sounds to me like we still got about half million.
And I'm also hearing to bid out the, the Carnegie building roof and to seal.
Mm-hmm.
Jeff, is that right with you? Carnegie building and?
Yeah, those are the two big ones right now.
Yeah.
That and health department, I mean, they're, Chris, been pretty good Christmas for them.
I don't really, you have to decide what you're going to spend it all on, or just play, I mean, please, let's get some numbers back.
This, this helps us to get started on some projects.
I just want to have, like Chris said, get some prices on them, because these numbers that we're poking in here, a lot of them are pretty.
It's good to start bidding stuff now, because everybody's looking to bid it, I mean, we can wait and award it, I mean, obviously, but all the stuff with health won't probably happen till summer, which. Right, I mean, we could put stuff out to bid, then we can start deciding stuff, and, I mean, we can let it later in the year or something.
One of what you mentioned was the sidewalks and handrails.
Mm-hmm.
So, is that number pretty, I mean, is that just a swag or is that a pretty solid number that should cover whatever we want to do, because we're looking at doing some other landscaping and stuff too.
Yeah, that's, that's, depending on what we, how we go and where we do, what we do. The other thing is going to be, we take the fuel tank out, make sure we have no environmental contaminants or anything else, and that's, uh, another figure that we might have to look at, but some of that might be covered by our insurance, so. Yeah, our ten K, to like, well, anything that will have, be good to. There's any contaminants. I got a package because I'm going to do.
I'm, I'm fine with that outside lighting for that, because it does get dark down there, especially this time of year fast, when people are leaving and coming in late, but I'm not going to pay eight thousand for it.
Nah, just, I probably just do it there.
Does that mean you want us to bid it and see what, what cost is?
Well, we'll put that with the landscaping.
Light and put it up. I know it might make it sound simpler than it is, but. Get a, get a couple of tap cons and.
What do you think about bidding this, uh, pressure washing and sealing, or cleaning and sealing over at the law enforcement center? There's a lot of staining and stuff on some of that limestone.
It was never sealed when the building was open.
I'm just saying, bid it, I mean, um. Some of it's looking pretty bad.
Maybe we did that and Carnegie at the same time, give it a price.
Yeah, because I'll have to clean and tuck point that, seal it.
Well, probably won't do the tuck point, but just.
Well, I thought, I mean, but they may.
Yeah.
They have to do some repairs and stuff.
I'm fine with getting it bid, have it bid as an alternate.
Should I first get that?
And I'd be curious to see what they would charge us, if they did it by itself, or if they included in what? And I'd be curious to see what they would charge us, if they did it by itself, or if they included in with the Carnegie at the same time. So, I don't know. Have them itemize it out or whatever.
So here's, here's the deal. There's a lot of small items here that people have requested, and so when there's money left over, they're gonna come at us and ask for their stuff, too, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. There's, uh, there's a lot of As on here, and there's some big ticket items, and I changed some of them to A minuses, or even, I mean, I, I made some of them Cs, you know, Greg, that's why we disagree on some of that, but.
You know, one of the small things is Bill did ask for, uh, new carpet and tile for the bathrooms. Maybe we'll do that, too. Carpet up there started to rip and tear. Stained, they don't want to come clean, their meeting area, you know.
It's tile in this meeting area, right? Talking about Bill Farr?
It's laminate, it's laminate, yeah. It's the old flooring left from Budweiser.
Stained, huh?
Yeah.
If we're building, bidding flooring at the health department, maybe I'll just bid that at the same time. Just see where it's at.
Yeah, while we're messing with it, because we've got the floors done in here, and then Carnegie's gonna take a little more on their carpet and paint.
We've done some painting, there's some, we've, we've got to there as we can reach, without getting scalloped, so. It's a lot of stuff where you can move it to, because everything is so packed.
How much we at, Debbie? What we got left?
Oh, I don't.
I bet we're not, I bet we're under six hundred.
Yeah, you're good.
We had a million that we were looking at?
Well, yeah. A million less, less the two hundred for the health department.
But if either one of the elevators just come through the voids.
Right, right.
We're down to about half of that. So do you sit there and see what we got left up to the end of the year and revisit it in six months, and then?
Yeah, I think we'll definitely have to revisit. Just depends on what the bids come in and everything else.
Or what big things come up with our HVAC, because that's always a surprise. Or we can rat hole it and save it for the old jail.
There you go.
I don't think you could save enough.
Sure I can.
Might have enough money to tear it down.
Yeah.
We can just take that floor up, go down to the concrete over there at the health, and, just kidding, Christie. It'd probably cost you more to color it, though.
Well, I got seven thirty-four, and Lynn got seven thirty-nine, so we're closed with all the ones that we highlighted.
Was that with, was that with health?
That's with, um, the FFNE, that's with the flooring, and that's with, uh, HVAC.
That's not the one point two, yeah.
Oh, you just want a flat zone, or no, I just picked those prices. Maybe that's worth it.
About five hundred left.
So this is a good start, and so.
Say we'll be back.
Yep.
So we'll be back. Doesn't sound like a threat, sure. Did we say yes on the sidewalks or way up? And this is what we're doing?
Oh, I didn't have any.
Not yet.
Sidewalk and handrails?
Yeah, we still need to probably, we may have to engage an architect or somebody to help with more formal plans or something, something I can bid on, but.
Is that enough direction then? I'm sorry, go ahead, Greg.
Sorry. Did you all want to do anything with that gravel lot we got down here, other than just legal gravel, or?
Is there, uh, pa- parking bumpers and stuff down there, or?
They're pretty trashy.
Are they?
I kind of cleaned it up, some of the rock pile and stuff that goes down there, cleaned up a lot of it. It probably needs another two loads of gravel, at least to, to fill it up and clean it up.
I don't know. I guess I need to look at that a little closer. I mean, are you thinking just asphalt? Are you thinking curb, or?
It's been thrown out to asphalt, it's been thrown out to concrete, uh, you know, we've been concrete, we've got public works done, we've got our crews. Uh, it's up to you guys. I know, does Public Works still have a small paving machine, or not?
I don't think so.
I don't know if I want to throw in a public works lab, but we can, if we're doing concrete work somewhere, and we want to piggyback off that bid or something, we can throw it in on there, but I don't have a problem, see what it's gonna cost to do. For a couple loads of gravel, we can live with it the way it is for a little while. We don't have any real use for it besides parking, right?
Right.
So I'm not a client to put a whole lot into it.
I'm just trying, they can, you know, snow removal and stuff to keep it.
Don't do it. Sometimes it's better to just leave it. Let it melt.
Little pods, you can put them up for your office, too.
We did have.
At the front gate, you can get an arm that goes up and down.
What, Debbie?
We did have ceiling, there's parking lot out here, and through this walkway. I noticed the other day, it's like, looking from above down, cracks everywhere.
But it's had cracks probably from about the time it was.
So maybe we need to have Public Works crack seal it, and then seal it?
Yeah, we've done it already once.
It probably needs to be done every year, though, doesn't it?
Yeah, this is, this needs to be sealed. The pit needs to come out and repaved. In front of the pit, we're, um, upstairs people park, and of course, that all needs to be tore up and repaved, the same way with down through the alley where the Public Fender's Park, too. It's just coming up.
Okay, so you got parking lot repaid for Carnegie. Where's ours at?
Yeah, the question is, is it the alley ours, actually, or is it people's store, or?
It's the city's.
Or is it the city's? A little alley that's going down to the pit.
Oh, over at Carnegie?
Yeah.
I'd say that's probably ours.
It's, it's a shared. I mean, there's other businesses down that, that use that way in. I don't think that, I'd have to look on the map. I don't think that's ours, but I could be wrong.
I know we take care of it. There's no removal, we're solving stuff.
Never really, officially. Well, maybe each of the landowners own to the middle, because there's other people that get in there.
I'd be, uh, I mean, if we're gonna look at sealing those or crack sealing, I mean, Public Works is gonna put out a bid for probably something. I don't know if they'll do some sealing or something, but maybe we could piggyback onto that or something.
Preger's asking for all the parking lot.
Well, I had a bid on that, and, from Public Works.
Was that to tear it up, or was that to?
I think it was just to seal it.
That alleyway looks like it belongs to the city.
Belongs to the city? I, I didn't think it.
Looks like it.
Parking lot approved bid at one point way back when, but it made it back down to the five here. Fifteen thousand just for Preger, but that was an estimate I got from somebody that.
Yeah, it was from Larry.
Yeah, but it wasn't Larry them doing it, it was.
Well, if we're gonna make Larry them do it, then we figure out what the bid was, and then it goes to their budget. Ask them to do it for free, taking their guys off other jobs.
What? No.
Get mail in control.
No, Debbie's saying no. Debbie don't want to pay him for doing any work.
No, I want to pay them. You can't ask them to do it for free.
Which side are you on?
Sorry.
I didn't know what you were shaking your head at.
Her road's probably always the first one gets snow pushed off of it, too.
I lost my grader.
It's not even, it's not even paved, so.
He retired.
That's the reason yours can't be paved, because then they'll think we're playing favoritism. I'm fine with looking at the driveways and parking lots and seeing by getting them.
Let's look at.
They're gonna last a lot longer if we maintain them, bottom line. So see what kind of maintenance we need to do.
So you're gonna bid all three of them, then?
I think probably do them all three at the same time's gotta be better than puzzling them together.
At least bid them all together.
It may be different if we, if we didn't have the money to do them, let's do one at a time and space them out every other year or something, but really, they need to be sealed. Cracks at least addressed probably yearly. Be out there melting some tar on the weekends. If we get to play with fire, I'd be willing to do it.
We just need to maybe time that, to bid that. I mean, obviously, if we're gonna do work at courthouse in the front, that needs to come first, and then once that's done and complete, then we come in, so probably late August, late summer or something, and try to get all that done. I think that's when the city's planning on doing some of the sidewalk work out here, too.
Okay, well, any other ones?
No, I think we got our plenty to do.
Health department, y'all sticking around awful long time. Making sure we all don't get lost in the Land House Clerk's office.
Doing good. That's a open end. You better not ask this question.
I didn't say they're gonna get any, I'm just asking. Debbie, I know you recognize us, I'm trying to be nice.
Oh.
All right, is that it? Anything else? I think that was all we had on the agenda, right? No other issues that have come before the commission this day. I'll entertain a motion to stand in recess until four thirty.
So moved.
Second, don't say every day, aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Sam didn't get commish one.